I was going to call the meeting to order at seven oh one. Can we please stand and say the pledge of allegiance? Oh, good. Hi Wendy. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Dr. Jones to present the operating budget.
Um, point of order. Sorry, point of order.
Yes.
Somebody needs to recognize me. Um, I just wanted to take a, a quick roll call. Uh, so I just want to see who is here. Karen Hirsch, you are here. Kathleen Stowe, you are here. Laura Costin, there you are. Sophie Koven, there you are. Cody, is Cody here?
No.
Uh, Michael Joseph, there you are, and I am here. And Mr. Caffeyelli, I don't see him. He did request a link and he is a member of this board. Please don't interrupt me. Has all of his-
Please take my attendance as well. Thank you.
I will record that you are here, but unless you can provide me with some certification from the town.
Excuse me, this is not the time nor place to, to discuss and adjudicate this. I appreciate that. This is not the time or place to adjudicate that. There are legal proceedings and this is not-
Not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to record who is here and who should be legally here as far as I'm concerned.
Again, I appreciate that that is your view. This is something that we are not going to adjudicate at this meeting. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Jones in order to present the budget.
Appreciate if you would please send Mr. Caffeyelli a link to the meeting because he is a member of the board.
I have already sent him a response and I'm turning this over to Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'm delighted to be here tonight to present the budget. I'll let, um, Mr. Antonaccio bring up the budget for us. So once again, Chair Hirsch, Board of Education members, cabinet, staff and community. I'm delighted to be here tonight to present the superintendent's proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six operating budget. I think the, the board is well aware that this is a twelve-month process. We start building this budget in June, July and August. Um, and it is, it's a challenging time in June, July and August because you're closing out the year we just finished. We're opening the year that we're starting and then we're building this budget as well. And that goes all the way through. First, we present capital, which is approved in October. Um, we then present this budget in November. And just as a reminder for this board, uh, we are the earliest, um, Board of Education who actually presents and works on their budget. In November, most boards of education are doing this, um, after the winter break in January. Uh, we go through December. We will have a couple of budget meetings there. And then we will move on to the BET and the RTM. And by the end of the school year, we will have a budget. When we look at how we build the budget and what this budget will do this year, what's being proposed, it keeps us on track with our curriculum management plan. And we just presented that a few weeks ago to the board. It also addresses two distinct structural budget gaps, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, those gaps, the first one is Title One, which the board is aware of. Um, we have a federal loss of funding that was unanticipated this current school year and that will follow us into next school year. We also have a ARP funding, which the board made the decision last year to go ahead and accelerate our curriculum funding and zero out that line. So we need to build that back into this budget. We also make sure that this budget meets all of our legal mandates, uh, continues our implementation of our special education action plan, and keeps professional development fully funded. So we're supporting our teachers and staff. There is a tremendous amount of preparation work that goes into this. And I, I want to take this moment and say thank you to Ben Branyan and his entire team, um, all of our administrators and our cabinet. We first start by looking at all of our academic needs and specifically how it ties to support the work that the board has identified in the strategic plan. We look at our previous budgets, the current budget that we're in right now. We analyze our enrollment projection data and that gets updated every year in October for the October first count for the state. We also look at all of our staffing. Do we need to make adjustments? Um, by program or school sites or schools in general. We look at our estimated fixed costs, probably the largest driver, and you'll see a slide on that later, our salaries. We gather all of our local, state and federal funding information. Again, everything that we do and what we do inside the budget, we want to tie back to the strategic work of the district. We are aiming for mastery of reading, math, science, and also, uh, increasing our graduation rate. We have a good graduation rate. We just think it can be a little bit better. We also want to make sure we're supporting our community, our students belonging to their schools. We want our teachers and staff to feel positive about the working environment. And we want to support our families and what they need so that every student succeeds. We're going to take just a few minutes to look at a few achievement and strategic metrics. I know the board's aware, but for the community, there's a very long, uh, presentation. If you really want to dive into, uh, the metrics, we're just going to look at a couple of pieces tonight. But again, it's about targeting our physical resources to make a difference for every learner. So we'll start with English language arts. When we look at our English language art achievement data for special education in grades three through five, we're thrilled with what we're seeing. Our proficiency in the last few years has gone up seven percent, while our level one, which what you see in the red, has gone down seven percent. This is exactly what we want to see. We want to be moving students along the continuum to find success. When we look at our ALP learners, again, if you look at that second column over in twenty twenty-two, our ALP students performed extremely well. We had, we had level three and level four. What you're seeing now, because we are again with our strategic plan, is in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, one hundred percent of our ALP students in grades three through five are at level four, the highest level. And that's what we want to see. We're very proud of what the work that our high school is doing. Greenwich High School, uh, for our students with high needs, uh, the proficiency is up six percent, and we want to see that continue to grow. Very exciting work at the high school. When we look at our English language learners, again, these are students who have been with us and have tested for two consecutive years. It's continuing to trend up. And again, that's what we want to see. We're very proud of this slide, and I know the board understands District Reference Group, DRG, the community is not as aware. Um, what this means is that they look at the actual demographics of each district. So you're comparing at more apples to apples, oranges to oranges. And what you'll see here, when you look at the growth for grades four through eight, we are competing with Dergay. And we're, that's a tremendous, uh, compliment to our staff and all of our teachers out in the classrooms and the administrators. When you look at what that means, if you go across right in the middle of the screen and you look at the ELL population for, for instance, New Canaan, Darien and Weston barely have an ELL population, point eight percent, one point five, one point three, where Greenwich is at five point five percent. When you look at the free and reduced population in New Canaan, it's zero. In Darien, it's one point four percent. Weston is one point two percent. Right now, we're at nineteen point five percent. So again, we are very, very proud that we are able to compete with a demographic that looks very different than us. Now we'll look a little bit at mathematics. Again, when we look at our math achievement data for our EL learners in grades three through five, our proficiency is up four percent. And what's really exciting on that red on the bottom, level one has dropped ten percent. And again, this is what we want to see. And we know with our EL learners, it takes almost five years to become proficient in the language. And so they're going to go from red to yellow to green to blue. And again, we're very, very proud of this result as well. When we look at math achievement data for grades three through five in special education, I will say this is probably one of my favorite slides. Our proficiency is up thirteen percent. And our level one has dropped sixteen percent. And just as a reminder to the board, we've invested heavily in not only the science of reading, but in our math program as well, and it's working. And again, a few math points of pride. We continue to see success district-wide. We're at an all-time aggregate achievement high in grades three through eight. Grades three through five are up an average of ten, uh, percentage points and grade six through eight, an average of six percentage points. And with science. When we look at our NGSS science achievement data, this test is taken in grades five, eight and eleven. I think the slide speaks for itself. Again, we are trending in the right direction and there are some tremendous gains in what is happening out in our schools with science. When we look at the survey data, that is again, part of our strategic plan. We are extremely proud of our family and community engagement. We can't ask for much better than eighty-nine percent of our parents to be satisfied and happy with our schools. And it, this continues to go up each year, and we're going to work hard and see if we can hit that ninety or higher next year. Um, again, we're really pleased with what we're seeing. When we look at all three of those, goal five, goal six and goal seven in the strategic plan, we, um, outperformed where our goal was by ten points on all three of those metrics. And again, that's exciting for us and we want to see that continue. Now let's look a little bit at enrollment. Our overall enrollment on October one was eight thousand five hundred and thirteen students. When we look at our historical enrollment, we've shown this slide for about the last four years. And it goes back, uh, to the sixties. And you can see that where we are now compared to the highest we've been in Greenwich before was going back sixty years is around eleven thousand was the high. The low was just above that six thousand mark where you see the trough in the middle. Those two red flags are where we closed a school parkway and then reopened it because the district started trending up again. And those are just being responsive to questions we hear all the time, uh, as we go through the budget process. What you're seeing out on the right-hand side is we're pretty much leveling out. We've been leveling out. If you look over the last twenty years, you can really see it. This is the student enrollment twenty-year look back. Again, just relatively flat. When we look at where we're going in the next ten years, our projections are saying relatively flat. We expect to go down a little bit in high school and to go up in elementary as a new wave comes through. Our high school is going to have smaller class sizes where we used to see seven hundreds. They're going to be more six hundred-ish at six fifty, and our elementaries are going to continue to grow again. And you'll see that in just a minute. Also, when you look at our projections, one question we get every year, well, your projections are really accurate. When you build the budget, how accurate are they? When you look at our projection this year for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, if you look down there on the bottom right of this slide, ninety-eight point three percent, that's our projection accuracy, which is very, very good. And when you look at elementary, middle and high, they're all ninety-seven point nine, ninety-eight point two, ninety-eight point nine. And if you look at that, go ahead, Mike can click one more. If you look at that from the perspective of what that means on a school. So in elementary, we were about eighty students under projection. We have eleven elementary schools. So that equates to about seven point three children per school for one student on a grade level. You are not going to have loss of staff or a teacher because you lose seven students in an entire elementary school. Same thing for high school. When you look at high school, the projection was off by twenty-nine students. Think how large our high school is, twenty-seven hundred. So again, you take those twenty-nine students and just to logically apply that, if we lose seven freshmen, seven sophomores, seven juniors, seven seniors, and you're looking at it from that perspective, seven students in a class size of six hundred and fifty or seven hundred, we are not going to be losing teachers. So again, this is just showing the projections and how accurate the projections are. If we look at our kindergarten enrollment versus Greenwich births, uh, the blue columns that you're seeing, those are all the birth rates. You can see it's going to be trending back up again. Those are actual birth data, um, from Greenwich. And then this year, you'll see the orange line just above that bar. That's what we call the in-migration. Those are people that have moved into Greenwich. Their children weren't born here. And we continue to watch that year over year. We expect that will probably jump up again next year even higher. Um, this year, again, I think the board is aware, there were big changes, legislative changes in the age to start kindergarten that has impacted, um, how many students we have in kindergarten this year. When we look at our preschool growth, I've talked about this, I think, every year over the last several years. We've more than doubled in students eligible by federal law. And when you look at where we ended last year, that is the most preschool students, and these are students who qualify for services, um, through child find, but the highest number we've seen in our pre-K. And to keep it in perspective, our pre-K program is large enough now that it could fill an entire elementary school. So we are somewhat fortunate that our K-five enrollment has been slowly declining because when we do open up a classroom, we've been able to utilize those for pre-K, unlike several districts around us who have had to build pre-K, uh, school buildings. And we have not had to do that in Greenwich. Our English language learner is a population that continues to grow. If you look from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, we are up a hundred and three students. And it takes, uh, EL teachers and additional staff to accommodate that growth. We've done a great job with that. When you look at our students qualifying for free or reduced lunch benefits, this year is a little bit lower than what we had last year, but that also is where we ended last year. Keep in mind, we keep working on getting these forms all year long. That's one of the biggest challenges, uh, is getting the forms turned in, um, from our families. So we will continue to work on that throughout the year. When we look at our special education students going from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, we have added two hundred and thirty-three special education students to the system. When you look at the columns on the bottom, what you're seeing is at the beginning, how many students were added in twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty-four? And you'll see on those kind of brownish, um, bars that it continues to increase. Then this is a testament to the great work we're doing with our action plan in special education. When we look at our special education outplacement, this is a new slide for us this year. And again, um, it, it's, it's great news for us in that if you go back to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, when we were starting our action plan and you look at the total population of special education, seven percent of our students were outplaced, seven percent. This year in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, that has changed and dropped to two point five percent. So what does that mean from a budget standpoint? It means instead of the thirty-two students that are outplaced beginning this school year, we could have had as many as ninety-two if we were still at seven percent. And from a budgetary standpoint, that means that we would be adding an extra sixty students who would have been in outplacement this school year at a cost of ten point one million dollars just for the outplacement line. And again, I, you know, credit the board, credit our staff, um, for the great work they're doing in special education and the action plan. For K-five classrooms over the, over time, one question we get as well, if you're going down in students, why do you never cut staff? Well, we do, but as you saw on the slide earlier, it happens quite slowly over time because it has to accumulate to enough students to actually lose an entire class. And if you go back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we had two hundred and ten classrooms or what we call section of students across the district. We now have one hundred and ninety-two. So we are down eighteen classroom sections as of this school year. And as a reminder, we had to add a class right before this year started. We would have been at nineteen. So let's talk a little bit about the budget expenses. Um, I think it's not news to anybody who's a budget watcher. The largest portion of our budget, seventy-six percent is the salary line. And then what you see in the light blue on the bottom of that, uh, pie chart is services purchased other. That's things like transportation. That is the bulk of that portion of the budget. Um, and that is primarily, uh, where our dollars go. And within that salary expense, this is really important because we want our dollars targeted to the classroom. And ninety-two percent of our salaries, it's budgeted directly to work with children and out in the classroom. And on the right-hand side of this, the very last item listed says administration, two point six percent. If you go back to twenty seventeen or prior years, you could have found this as high as three and as four percent. And we work hard to keep this low at two point six percent. Our transportation expense, when you look at this budget, almost, uh, forty-eight percent of that is just general transportation. Our private schools are on that left-hand side in that gray area at fifteen percent. And then our special education, which includes preschool, is twenty-nine percent of the entire transportation budget. And as a reminder, we are required in Connecticut to provide transportation for not only public school, but also private school. And anybody who's interested in looking that, um, the legislation on that up, it's on the bottom right-hand of this slide for you. This is just kind of an overview of what the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, um, proposed budget is, looks like. When you start on the far left, we start with our current budget. Then we must go in and add the, uh, GWI and the step. And that's how we get the wage increase. Then we look at our transportation, which again, that's contractual. Both of those first two are driven by contract. When we look at our special education, a lot of that is contractual. And that needs another million dollars this year. We have some new investment, which is the box on the left-hand side, and we'll be talking a little bit about that. But again, some of these, like adding a pre-K section, just because it's a new investment, it's not optional. Um, be staying competitive with our sub-rate. It's really not optional. And then what you get is a budget before we have those two ARP and Title One challenges. It would have been at four, four point six percent. And what you're seeing on the right-hand side is that then we need to add back in the curriculum investment so we can support the curriculum management plan. That's just over seven hundred ninety-nine thousand. We have a loss of Title One funding. Again, those are our schools that are qualified as Title One. And this is less money from the federal government, uh, six hundred and twenty-two thousand. Where that puts us is at a five point four percent increase. Again, this is kind of the same information, a different view for those of you that find this easier. But when you look at just that wage increase alone, we need five point eight million dollars just for the wage increase. And then you add transportation and we add our special education and student services. And then those few new investments, again, which are like the substitute cost, uh, we have to have a device refresh, um, it, things that we can't, it's not really an option. And that's how we get to the ten point three million dollars. And again, in this operating budget, we have a proposed operating budget of two hundred and two million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand and fifty-one dollars. That's an increase in spending of ten point three million dollars or a five point four percent increase in the budget. And keep in mind, before Title One and at a curriculum adjustment, which we must do, we were at a four point six percent increase. And the next question people generally will ask us, how did we look at the guidelines this year that come from the BET? Well, the BET guidelines did not come out until October twenty-ninth. So we didn't have them to look at as we were building this budget at all. But I think it's really important to state that it does not cover a two point nine six percent, which is the guideline, does not cover contractual needs and student needs. It does not cover the contractual costs. And again, our salaries are five point eight million dollars just on the contractual salary line. Two point nine six will not even do that. And it would require, if we said as a board, let's try to meet the guidelines that are, that were given, it would need a decrease in the proposed budget of basically four point six million dollars. Um, that would be a tremendous hurdle for us. We don't have four point six million dollars. And if you equate that to the number of teachers, you're talking about forty-five teachers. It's a big number. So as a reminder, we have a lot of meetings that will be coming up. Uh, the Bo, a Board of Ed will have a budget meeting on Thursday, December the fifth at Central Middle School. We'll follow that up on the twelfth with another budget meeting. We will be doing the BET presentation, January twenty-third at Town Hall. And then we will have our first BET budget meeting in February. Um, all of these dates, we put in our Friday note that goes out. We will give lots of reminders so our community, uh, will know when these dates are coming up. And, um, just as a reminder to the Board of Ed, your budget books will be ready tomorrow to be picked up at the office at Havemeyer. Um, if you need assistance getting those to you, just let us know. And, um, again, we'll see you tomorrow. If you pick those up, and we encourage you all to start sending questions as quickly as you can, once you get that budget book. So thank you.
Um, Dr. Jones, uh, I was going to remind, um, everyone also from, you know, the public that the budget book and this presentation will be posted on Board Docs, uh, following this meeting or for those who would like to, uh, to look at it online. Um, and additionally, how would you like us to handle sending you the questions? Do you want to do a, uh, link of a Google Doc? Uh, so that we can all put them into this and don't duplicate questions?
Um, I think if you start by sending them to me and we'll start building the Google Doc and then probably that next round, we'll send you out the link.
Okay, Kathleen?
Um, Cody is not here this evening, who of course is the budget chair. But, um, I would like to also find a time, Dr. Jones, that we can get together, obviously with you and Ben to go through this in more detail. But just having spent a lot of time on budget in the past, um, I really appreciate the presentation. I feel like you hit a lot of, you've, you've been here a bit, so you kind of got ahead a lot of the questions that you know would be coming. Um, so that I really appreciate. I think it's really important to talk about, um, the comparables. And you did a good job of noting where we are versus Derg A, um, comparables with a very different demographic. Um, and, and seeing some of the trends is really important, looking at the enrollment and that sort of historical detail is very important. Because of course, a trend is not in one year, but over multiple years. So all that I appreciate. Um, and but we're really going to need to dig into it. I mean, ninety percent of the budget is fixed costs essentially. Um, so we're kind of always cutting out that last ten percent. And, um, that's getting harder and harder. But I think it'll be helpful to remind everyone that our capital budget was really small this year. And so, um, it's nice to sort of think about that as you're looking at the operating budget. Um, but I will talk to Cody and, um, see when we can get together, uh, with you and Ben. And Ben, this was amazing. So thank you so much for this presentation.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you to the, uh, entire administration for pulling, you know, again, full year process to get here. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, I see, uh, Dr. Mark Anthony Anthony's hand up.
So, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Tony, I appreciate it. And I know you've had some challenges of, um, this, 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 um, this week. The one thing to think about, if you could, um, um, which I think would be handy when we, um, in further conversations, we talked about it last meeting, but I think it's important to have handy, um, a, a slide with the, the staff reductions that we've, we have made over the last five years. I think, I think that would provide some help with the context here. The, um, if that makes sense.
It does. And in the budget book, in the letter portion, it actually lists over the last couple of years, a, a lot of the positions that have been reduced. But we can certainly add a slide to that as well going forward if we think that would be helpful.
And then without, without, without going into it, the, um, I would make a suggestion, uh, uh, Madam Chair, um, that if we could, since we have some discrepancy about board membership, that, um, a, a copy of the budget book be provided, Mr. Caffeyelli during this time.
Uh, it is available online. That's where I'll be finding mine. So. Uh, and I believe we do typically, if somebody needs it in, uh, a printed version, provide it to them. Is that correct, Dr. Jones?
We have cut back a lot on that, especially since we don't have a print shop. Um, so we pretty well do the Board of Ed. We don't do a lot of extra like we used to, um, because it is online. And to be honest, I, Ben could probably answer that or Mr. Soprano it's, um, better than I about how many we actually have printed. It's pretty much the Board of Ed and BET.
Okay, we'll check in on that tomorrow then. Um, if there isn't anything else, um, I wish you all happy reading, uh, through the always, uh, very thick and in-depth budget, uh, a book and other documents. And, uh, I look forward to seeing the questions from, um, from all uh, in regards to our budget going forward. And we'll see you, I guess we have a board, another board meeting in, uh, week, two weeks. So we'll see you then.
So should I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We definitely need that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, who would like to second that? Okay, Sophie made motion to adjourn. Kathleen Stowe seconded. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Uh, needs to be roll call since it's virtual.
Okay, Mike.
Yes.
So, Sophie.
Yeah.
Jen.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Wendy.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Me, yes. So, one, two, three, yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
Good night.